Can we all stand and do the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Our next item is the minutes of November eighteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes that may all please?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Discussion and approval of the claims. Second.
I believe I have found a way, a step for us to take, an easy step to increase transparency in the claims process from talking to the, one of the auditor's deputies. I'm just looking through these and, for instance, you look at a $3,000 charge to Gateway Hotel or a $3,600 charge to Midwest Monitor. It's ordered by department, but there's no way to tell if the hotel, what city it was in, if it was for a conference. I just think for us, it'd be helpful to have sort of a memo line. Looking through what is published in the newspapers, there's almost more detail after the fact than what we look at before the meetings, and I just want to make sure that we know which ones to focus on, right? Because when I look at this, it's, it's, it's a long list of vendors and totals and no descriptions except if department has decided to put them in the comment box in the software, and that's what I wanted to mention, is that the system Sun Guard that we use, also known as HTE, does have the option to fill in a description box, and this does not expose any confidential information. I just think it would be very helpful for us as supervisors when we approve claims, when we have a question, because I asked the auditor himself if, if he could look at a few claims for, for hotel bills and tell me if, if they were for a certain conference or if, what even what city they were in, and he couldn't. I don't know, we don't know unless we go to and pull up the individual claims from those departments, and that's too cumbersome to put online. Individual, individual claims for every single item, so I think, and I would like to move that we adopt and approve by next meeting a short policy that...
Let me stop you. That's something I should, I think should be on the agenda for discussion.
Then I move that we... Yes, then I move that we put it on the agenda for next week regarding a policy, writing a policy to approve that would direct department heads to fill in this, this description blank as they put in claims, because then this will print out and this will be available to all of us as we look at the claims on the agenda before the meeting.
Why don't we put it on the agenda for next week and have this discussion, whatever information has to be presented. If the auditor has got some information, then we can all add it. But if you just do it, turn it out to your descriptions.
Sure, I can, I can move that we put it on the agenda for discussion next week. The information is pretty self-evident, though. It's, it's that unless we pull up the individual claims one by one, we don't, we don't have a short memo, a short description of, of what a hotel bill is for. To us, we understand mileage, but if there's a charge from, say, an $11,000 charge from a, from a hardware company that we get several parts from, or an electrical company, I just want to know if it's for a new system, or if it's for maintenance, or just the routine bill. I think that would really help us as we look through departments, and that, that can easily be directed of department heads. Just a very short discussion of a policy to, to mandate that there be some transparency, just a short memo line, you know, no more than a, than a tweet worth of, of a description.
For every claim you want?
For every claim.
I don't, I don't have any problem putting it on the, the agenda for discussion, but I also think that we should allow the department heads and also the other elected officials to look at it within their own departments to see what that would entail as far as time and...
I don't think it would involve any extra time.
It may not, but let's, let's do it that way rather than just make it a mandated situation for them.
I think it is very helpful, because some, some departments do fill in that description, and, for instance, there was, there's a hardware company and the description is, is gas heaters or water heaters or something like that, so...
Is there a second to the motion?
No.
I don't think...
Just second, after, several years ago, the board passed a motion at the, kind of the official part of the term for the board. That motion would be on board at this point, because the motion was to approve the paid claims. So that's something that Mr. Boykin said that he's going to put on the agenda entirely and not for you.
Yes.
So there is no motion in the board at this point. The motion that is on for, for you is to approve the claims.
Is there a motion to approve the claims as presented this?
There's been a motion.
Okay, on a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Ted, do you see any problem with that?
No, no, we discussed that, and I think that Mr. Boykin suggested very good, that we just have the agenda, have the discussion of, and bring in the plan and the power.
And I think any feedback from the various department heads and also the, the elected officials would be very appropriate for next week when we do have it on the agenda. Thank you. Item number three, let's have the human resources, we have the approval of the memorandum of personal transactions, and we will pass that around for signature. Is there a motion?
Move it.
There's a second. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the authorization for the initiation of hiring process. Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item four, Board of Administration, approval of lifting of a tax suspension.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B is approval of a resolution to notice for property sales.
We start the hearing date, the ninth to the eighth day of December, ten fifteen, parcel one oh nine six three five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item five, which is the Board of Administration, dental policy, discussion and setting of a hearing for budget amendment.
Okay, we usually do two budget amendments a year, and the first one here is kind of cleanup. We did some pay adjustments, we did settle law, our contracts with our deputies after budgets were set, and we do have one, two corrections. We do have some budgets that need to be amended since the secondary roof projects come on board. Metal health will have a few, and I've talked to several departments that usually have budget amendments if they want to do one now. I'm asking they turn in all the information this week, so I can get the information back to you next week, but what we need to do is set the hearing for, what I have, December ninth at ten fifteen. And Rena, kind of pushes through a little bit, I'd like at these new numbers that should have been there in the first place, but we didn't have time during the budget cycle, that came after the budget cycle, and get them on the operating statements before we send out budgets to the departments so that they are true and correct. So I will have the information to you next week.
So we'll have to set the public hearing December ninth at ten fifteen.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, item B, Dennis, discussion and action on the wording of Prairie Hills roofing.
Okay, on this particular issue here, we did have, we did accept bids on September thirtieth. When you did bid this out, there's a roof project which included the gutters and all the different rooms we're talking about at Prairie Hills. The building service superintendent took this back and it come back a couple of weeks. He did come back a little later than that, and he only brought part of the bid back to the board to be approved. It was just a slip up, they got done. The work on the main roof has been approved at sixty-five thousand, that is done. There's a second roof for eleven thousand five hundred, eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars that had been done, that would not include an approving when you worded the bid out. Technically, it should have been awarded before we did the work, but there was a reason he did do this, because the taps, when they laid it out warm, the taps could lay down so they wouldn't blow off when we had a heavy wind. The gutters, they have not been approved yet, but they were an initial bid. On the gutters, they are just work in progress, they just started working on them. We did get nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars back on copper from the sale of the old gutters that were taken down, so we did put that in our CIP fund to offset some of the gutter costs here. So the basic thing we're trying to do today is award the bid that's after the fact on apartment and is before the fact on some of it on the gutters. And do you have any comments, Josh, or any?
Can you answer any questions that the board might have?
It's all within the original bid. Have we gone over the original?
No, the original bid was a hundred and seventeen thousand, when you total up what I gave you there, that equals the bid that was received, but not totally true.
Give me a motion.
Are we moving on the eleven two fifty and the sixty-five hundred?
And the thirty-four thousand and sixty, eleven thousand two fifty, the sixty-five hundred. You have already approved, it's been paid, sixty-five thousand seven fifty.
Right, we did that two weeks ago.
We're basically affirming that the original bid is being accepted, and it hasn't been formally accepted or approved by the board, and so we're doing that, and it would encompass all of the, the smaller items in the bid.
Peter, is there a dollar figure that you want to add?
Fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars will cover all.
Is that over the bid?
No. When I add all these up, it does come back to the original hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a little bit like J.C. Rupp.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, do we want to move on to item C? We do have a public hearing.
That's a set time, but...
It's a set time.
We have about two minutes to go.
Getting killed in minutes.
Involving this situation here, we're approving the sale of the bombs. We're having a public hearing for public comment, if there is any, and then we close that hearing, and then we go on to authorization to create different motions here. One thing we'd like to say, Mark's here, there's some good news, this project was done by Lever, and they did it rather fast, and Mark is going to be, will be opening at mid-afternoon today, so we're putting dust control on it starting around noon, and once that has a little time to dry the road, we open the traffic.
Fantastic, that is fast.
And that was their deadline date, December something like that?
Um, I think it was December fifteenth. Now, the project isn't a hundred percent complete, we still have roadside seating to do. There's a bit of order excavation that asks to be moved from here, but that can be done under traffic, and the networks continue, so, but the road is fit and ready to be opened, so...
Well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on it. It is now ten fifteen. So you go ahead and make the formal presentation, Dennis.
Okay, when you're opening a public hearing here, you're asking for any comments or objections or for against the project.
Right.
For the loan. I think we already pretty much had that ahead of time, but this is a formal part of it, and then if there are no comments, then you pass, close the hearing, so you can ask the public what are their comments.
Has there any comments for or against this particular project? Seeing none?
The hearing is closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the...
You're going to approve a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action. Your resolution is taking proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars, general obligation capital loan on Series two thousand D.
Move it. There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item two, approval of a resolution instituting the proceedings to take additional action.
That's a...
Is that what we just did?
Yeah, it's pretty much the same thing. They tried to make two motions, but we are not.
All right, very good.
So we're here at, I think, at one point, what's our entry, one point?
One point seven four.
Seven four percent. And we have enough borrow here to pay the contractor, pay for it right away, pay for the five thousand dollars we agreed to on the agreement with attorneys, and enough to cover some coating next spring, service going at least.
And Mark, we're, we're right up to speed as far as, well, we're ahead of schedule on this road out there and...
I'm getting it open, it's ahead of schedule, yes.
Right. So it will be open when?
Today by one three o'clock.
All right, wonderful.
Who gets to write on it first, on the road? And the main work.
We've already been writing on this. We have our sign man hands to, today, the last, the last issue is to put out some dust control to help keep our gravel in place, so...
I see we have a representative from CF Industries here. Would you have any comments relative to getting this road open for you?
We're very pleased about it, it's going to be very helpful to us.
When are you going to start your one-way traffic up to that corner?
Um, you know, I'm not sure about that. This, this will help move that along.
My, my suggestion would be when they get back from Thanksgiving holiday, you know, the day might be a little quick.
Right.
I've seen, because they're probably meaning to share, they're taking a extended break for Thanksgiving, five days on roadside, so...
Yep. Maybe one day.
Well, we're very happy that we were able to, you know, expedite this project for the company down there, and I think it's going to be a benefit not only to you, but I think for future development in that specific area, and it's just a benefit to, I think, to the entire county as a whole.
Oh, we really are, and I, and I know that the neighbors down in that area appreciate it as well.
Absolutely, it'll take a lot of pressure off. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, item six, discussion and process of emergency services, discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning, Gary.
We do have some handouts, I'll get to here in a minute. I've kind of written my comments out, so I'm going to sort of follow what I've, I've put in, right? Just give me a minute here, if it's going to be a minute.
Take your time.
I'd like to review what took place last week for me and respond. We'll share with you what I believe were required also as we move forward. I also apologize to the documents I'm going to hand out to you today, we're not in the board packet. We worked over the weekend to get them prepared.
Sure.
Did you make sure David was not doing? I first learned that Sheriff Drew's concerned in an email sent Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at four fifty-three P.M. I just finished work Tuesday, I was scheduled to be off on Friday, as I was having, expecting family in town for a three-day weekend. Sheriff Drew's email was sent to all of the Woodbury County Supervisors, as well as several other people. Friday morning, I received a call from Major Stollman of the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office to talk about the email the sheriff had sent. Major Stollman told me Sheriff Drew had just recently returned from a sheriff's conference and made, was made aware for the first time of chapter twenty-nine C in the Iowa Code and the existence of the Emergency Management Commission. Shared with Major Stollman that I had family in town, had a full schedule on Monday, and I recall next week, set up a time that we could get together and talk about this issue. On Tuesday, November eighteenth, I received a call from a local recorder asking for a response to what was said at the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors meeting that morning. It was at this point that I learned Sheriff Drew's email was the subject of conversation at the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors meeting, and now becoming the subject of several news and social media stories. Based on the local news accounts and reviewing the video of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors meeting from November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, I will attempt to address the issues that I'm aware of. First, I believe there was a concern, or one of the concerns, but they're in a particular order, was raised about funding grants by management of taxpayers' funds. My staff and I have managed or been responsible for more than, for securing more than two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars of public funding, local operating budget, grants and disaster funds in the past twenty-eight years. Twenty-eight years of managing these budgets, not once have we ever been over budget of the allocated funds. We have never had to come in before any funding agency, including the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, and ask for initial funds in the middle of a budget year. These public funds are routinely audited by local, state, federal, and outside auditing agencies as part of government's practice, and we have never received anything other than an outstanding rating as we have administered these taxpayers' dollars. This is also true for the other departments and local governments we have worked with, and in some cases administered grants for. Every penny of these funds are accounted for and that we've had direct control over, and every penny is passed to the Woodbury County Treasurer's Office and the Woodbury County Auditor's Office. No checking account, no funds that are outside of the county courthouse. All grant fund documents are routinely in the possession of Jean Jessen, the deputy auditor for Woodbury County. She's asked the Woodbury County Grants Coordinator, it was established by the board a few years ago. Not one dollar of over two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars in twenty-eight years for any reason from any local, state, or federal funding that I have helped manage, my staff has helped manage and secure, has ever had used paid. I'm passing out a letter from the Director of Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Mark Scoville. You will see from this letter that Woodbury County is also in good standing of all relevant grant requirements administered by the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, which is the agency charged with conducting emergency management in Iowa. I also understand there was a question about Woodbury County's compliance on emergency plans, and as you can see from Director Scoville's letter, we're in full compliance. Woodbury County is in compliance with all state and federal planning, training, and exercise requirements. These plans and documents used have been used to manage numerous local disasters over the past three decades. Our emergency plans and how we manage disaster and emergencies have become models for other communities in the United States and around the world. Woodbury County has received numerous awards and national recognition for our emergency planning process. I understand there was a question about the local Emergency Management Commission, and I'm not going to get into the background of how I became the emergency manager today, that's for, unless you want to, that's for another day. I believe the Emergency Management Commission members have been kept well informed and have been involved in the process. Here's some examples of how. Five years ago, we formed an emergency management leadership team, including at least one, and at times three members of the Woodbury County Sheriff's Department Command Staff, two members of the Sioux City Police Department's Command Staff, two members of the Sioux City Fire Department's Command Staff, and one member of the city of Sioux City's Community Development Planning Staff, who regularly attend weekly meetings. We have also, we also have more than two dozen committees, commission boards that we work with and interact with on a regular basis. While face-to-face meetings were not taking place, members of the commission were involved in the management of this agency. I disagree with Sheriff Drew when he said until recently, he was unaware that the commission existed and that he was supposed to be a member of it. What's being passed around now is an agenda that I prepared, meet with the new sheriff when he took office in January of two thousand and thirteen. He and I met, along with other members of his command staff, and you can clearly see the Emergency Management Commission was one of the things that we talked about. Document being passed out now is a grant document through Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and if you look at the title, you will see it says, I want to make sure it's right, Emergency Management Performance Grant, two thousand and eleven Agreement Articles. Sheriff Drew also stated that a previous sheriff, Sheriff Drew also stated that he had talked to a previous sheriff, and he was unaware of this commission. In two thousand and eleven, Sheriff Glenn Parrott, a member of the commission, signed the Emergency Management Commission Performance Grant Application. I'll slow it down a little as you catch up on the paper. The document now being passed around is from two thousand and thirteen, and we read it right off of the title, Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, FY two thousand and thirteen, Emergency Management Performance Grant, Application Assurances and Certifications. The document now being passed around is replica of, basically the same from two thousand and fourteen as what Sheriff Drew signed in thirteen, and it's the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, FY two thousand and fourteen Homeland Security Grant Program, Application and Assurances. Sheriff Peter Drew also stated to get spoken to former Sheriff Dave Amick, who is now the mayor of Bronson, Iowa. Mayor Amick is serving as the mayor's representative to the commission. Mayor Amick serves as the mayor's representative to the commission. Mayor Amick signed the two thousand and fourteen Emergency Management Commission Performance Grant Application. I believe this clearly shows awareness and involvement by members of the Woodbury County Emergency Management Commission. Where do we go from here? I have said for over two decades, and I've never been quiet about it, the way we do emergency management as a combined department needs to change. I think we now are going to make that change. Woodbury County Emergency Management and Woodbury County Emergency Services have historically been functioning as two departments with a single budget and a combined staff. Each of these departments provide critical and necessary services to the citizens of Woodbury County. Over the past thirty years, each of these departments' roles and responsibilities have evolved, and several additional duties have been added. Because of these additional duties and roles and responsibilities, recent changes in, recent changes to twenty-nine C, this single department should be divided into two moving forward. The mission of Woodbury County Emergency Services should not, should never have been a function of Woodbury County Emergency Management. The Emergency Management Division has always been and should remain a direct report to the Board of Supervisors. As far as the Emergency Management Commission, I have asked the Iowa Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to provide this community technical assistance with regards to setting up a new Emergency Management Commission. Woodbury County Emergency Management, current Iowa Code twenty-nine C, must have a commission that is defined within the code, and due to recent changes in that code, Iowa twenty-nine C, the three-person Emergency Management Commission needs to be changed in order to meet the requirements. I'm sorry I didn't bring copies of twenty-nine C for everybody, which is along the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management website, and see it for yourself, I was just trying to save a little paper, but I do have copies for each of the board members. Changes to Iowa Code twenty-nine C now requires instruction which each of the mayors or the mayors designate will be a voting member on the commission. One member of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors designate, the Woodbury County Sheriff, by the Woodbury County Sheriff's designate, will all be voting members of the commission. This will create a seventeen-member Emergency Management Commission. There are multiple sections of the Iowa Code that will speak to this issue of the Emergency Management Commission, their role and responsibilities, and their duties, and their, their structure. The Board of Supervisors going forward with this commission as form will have one seat on that commission. In closing, and I'll take some questions after that, and my staff and I feel our professional reputations have been compromised by last week's events. We have never had any issue addressing any concern. We feel the way this manner, we feel, the manner in which this matter was brought forward lacked transparency, it lacked professionalism, and it lacked due process. We've been crucified in the media, and we didn't deserve it. I respectfully request that in the future that we return to the time when elected officials or department heads have a concern that they would like to address with the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors that it be placed on the public... that be placed on the public agenda. Background materials can be provided, and in order for all interested persons, parties to be notified in a timely manner and to be given significant sufficient time to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
There definitely a need to change, and I can, I will tell you, when I got hired, I didn't hire on as the Emergency Manager. I inherited this job three decades ago. I hired on with the county, by the board, to run the Emergency Services Division. I took on the Emergency Management responsibilities, not because I wanted them, but because former Sheriff Russ White, one day, had a gentleman named Willie who used to deliver the mail. Willie walked in my office and sent a pile of papers down on my desk several weeks after I took over. And he said, I said, "What are these?" And he said, "The sheriff wanted you to handle them." And he smiled and turned around and walked out the door. And it was that point that I found out I was running two different departments with two different missions. And over the years, the responsibility of both of these have increased. And I'm no longer, it's time to separate them. It's time to move forward, it's time to get an Emergency Management Commission established, it's time to get a budget established, it's time to hire emergency management staff. We will hand them the greatest gift ever. Every emergency plan in Woodbury County, the agency's current, matter of fact, it's not just current, it's been, it's been run through the ringer by every agency that's inside that plan. Every agency that has worked with that plan has had to bite the apple and put it together. So we see going forward, we will meet who's going to represent the Board of Supervisors on that commission. I expect shortly after the first of January. I would be looking on the sheriff, be the temporary chair to get the new commission started, to call the first meeting, and to run the first meeting until officers are elected. They will need to establish a budget, that budget won't take effect until July 1st of next year. I will stay and I will help through that process. I will help the new person get oriented, that's what the commission's desires are. Once that person is up to speed, I respectfully request from that Board of Supervisors where I was hired.
Gary, the information that you presented has been very good, overwhelming. It's been information that I'm glad that you've made public and you'll give us an opportunity to go through it and prove it. I, for one, and I think the rest of us, would like to say to you that you've done an extraordinary job as the Emergency Services Director in the program in Woodbury County. Our program is second to none in this state and in the country for that matter. And I think it all began with the tragic happenings of Flight 232 25 years ago, which we just commemorated a few months ago, and the services was held out of the thing that you were talking about there. I've attended numerous meetings with you and about emergency services and about the public safety of this community. There's never been a situation where your integrity or the program has been chastised or looked at as a program that should have been scrutinized. It's been a, it's been a, it's been a wonderful relationship, and you've been a great ambassador for this, for this county.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, I'd like to acknowledge your family in the back of the room. She's our administrative assistant at Climbing Hill, and she has worked like a dog. She's also been doing two jobs. She's been running the clerical and administrating stuff for both departments now for over 10 years. Her and I together have handled literally millions of dollars. And what I saw on social media, what I saw, I can't even begin to tell you. We're calling our private attorneys to find out if we're going to lose our houses. What's been going on the last couple of years in this room at the end of the board meeting is shameful. We are all big boys and girls, if you've got something you want to talk to the board about, put it on the agenda. Give everyone your, this process has compromised the professional integrity of good people, and it's wrong. Thank you, Gary.
I just want to be clear on something.
Mr. I don't put that on your table, okay? You're brandy, you haven't been here for, I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't normally hear everybody.
Just to be clear on what you're saying, you mentioned recent changes to 29C that establish the lawful need for this commission that doesn't currently exist. When were those recent changes to 29C?
This commission exists today, it's a three-member commission, the bad odds, but it went back to 1911. The changes to 29C that took place, I believe, what, two, two years ago? I believe there were two years ago. And what the big change was that in that 29C was, it made two changes. And I know, it made two changes. It used to be you could do a three-person commission. And quite honestly, talking to Director Scowden, we probably moved forward doing a three-person commission, but I think it was just going to come back in my eyes again later in life, because we've been a three-person commission for a long time. Not beneath my ownership, but my job to call meetings, okay? If you look at 20, if you look at 29C in the Iowa Code, the commission is supposed to delegate the responsibility of running the organization to me. I've been a hundred, okay? But those changes, the big change in 29C that takes effect, that took effect was now, it used to be each municipality's sheriff and board had a seat at the table. It used to be the mayor, the board, the sheriff could send anybody. It sent a fire chief in, it sent a city clerk, it sent a public works guy. Problem we had as an Emergency Management Association, the problem of Supervisors affiliates that I had was you had a bunch of non-elected officials sitting at the table establishing a budget, establishing a tax asking. We actually, as an association, asked for that to be changed. Now, it's up to the commission how many meetings to have in a year, but at any meeting in which budgeting is taking place, and they consider chapter 24, there must be either elected the mayor or an elected official from that jurisdiction sitting at the table during that budgeting time. The rest of the year, the commission can have, if they can, the mayor, the mayor's designee, the sheriff's executive or the supervisor, they can delegate to whomever to set on that commission and to help the coordinator through the daily tasks of these works. But when you look at this job, and you look at 29C, then you flip over and you look at 670 of the Iowa Code, this thing becomes, when you create it, it's a municipality, and it's got a lot of work. In 605, the administrative rules lays out exactly all the details of the commission. I've been doing all of it, it's all current, it's all done. What needs to happen now is there needs to be a commission established, 17 members. I would never encourage them to delegate their responsibility to anyone. How can a mayor know what's going on in the commission and not be at a meeting and then show up at the meeting and decide the budget?
So the changes you're suggesting going forward are to put us in compliance with Iowa Code 29C, correct?
I can regular break down into compliance, just so everybody in this room and everybody that has a concern and if they, if they want me to. I've asked the State of Iowa to provide technical assistance and to oversee that process and to be a part of it, to make sure and to give comfort to everybody involved that is being done correctly. But I think the sheriff seems to have an interest in emergency management. I plan to work with him, and I plan to work with the current two members of the commission to lay out for them a roadmap going forward and to help them if they want. If they don't want my help, that's fine. I've done 30 years of this emergency management thing. I'm ready to go back over and just run Emergency Services, because we've got a lot of stuff, we're not getting done on that as well. But I can help with it, if they want to bring the state in and have the state do it for them, that's fine. But this has gone on long enough that I didn't do a good job.
Gary, does the Emergency Management Commission, do they have their own taxing authority?
The emergency, good point. The Emergency Management Commission, that's another change that was made in 29C a few years ago. They will be able to, they send their, there's five options by which you pay for the commission. There's five options, they can choose to do it in 29C, you can see those five options. The option generally used is a countywide levy, and that levy, that request for that funding goes through the county and it will go on the tax statement, it'll actually show up on the tax statement as an emergency management levy, just like the city assessor or the county assessor shows up on the tax statement.
I don't think that has been the concern, I think the concern has been the lack of meeting minutes for the oversight commission. And I'm happy that you are supporting a commission to be established. I'm just, I'm wondering if you believe that you have not been given the go-ahead to do that in the past by a commission that may or may not have existed in your mind.
You know, there's still be, there's still be around here that can say they didn't know, okay, including me, that we could have done this better, but it's one of these jobs where, you know, I've got two full-time positions, my staff's got two full-time positions, this is going to take a lot of work. I'm going to need, this is going to take a lot of work, this is going to be months of work. We're going to have to sign MOUs, whoever the commission is is going to have to sign MOUs on personnel matters and legal matters and insurance. You know, this isn't, this isn't, hey, let's have a meeting and now we're a commission. This is, this is hours and hours and hours, our two is work to take it from where we are today to where I think, where the law says it has to go tomorrow, not where I think it needs to go, where the law says it has to go. And I think when we do this, we'll be a model for the other communities in the state of Iowa that are not all following the rules. Okay.
Speaking of, of, of following the rules, I believe we've all been, have received an email from the, from the auditor, apparently a building services employee brought to the auditor's attention, the sale of a generator which did not follow dissolution of county personal property policy. And I think there may be some source confusion of Starcom as far as how Woodbury County may be the custodian of the, the funding or the check writing. I want to get our thoughts on how that all being, so to speak, in one pot may need to change.
I, I will bring forward a budget recommendation that will break Starcom out as a separate budget. The board will consider, Starcom is owned by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, it's under 28D agreement, and it's also under Interstate Compact, okay? It's a system that was created back in 2005, I did it. I helped write the 28D agreement, and I know what it says. And I know this email's been pinging around, and a lot of this confusion and a lot of this anxiety could have been avoided if somebody had picked up the phone and asked me the question, okay? First off, this is a generator that was, came from the old AT&amp;T tower site out by the county landfill. As near as we could determine, that generator was put in that tower when it was built in 1961. Glenn Sedby and I worked together when we were building Starcom and renovating that tower to run public safety radio, made a decision based on the age of that generator that it wasn't going to meet the needs of public safety, wasn't reliable enough for public safety. Hadn't been running five years, it would need to have been torn down before you could even start it because of corrosion inside the engine, or potential corrosion inside the engine. We didn't know what to do with this generator. We picked it up and we moved it out to Prairie Hill. Former Chief Deputy Craig Logan had thought maybe he might get somebody to work on it, get the prisoners to overhaul it, and he got a prisoner that had decent mechanics experience and was going to hook it up to Prairie Hill facility so there was backup power to the kitchen and supplies in jail. Along with that generator was a 1,000-gallon Loveground insulated concrete heated fuel tank, okay? And it had old fuel. In the October Labor Day weekend storm, that generator sat there from 2005 until October of this year. In October, I received a call from Mike with Building Services telling me the building had been damaged and I needed to do something with the generator and I needed to do it right away. He had a friend that he thought might be interested in it, and he said, "We need to get at least two prices." And he insisted it was county property. It was not on the county's assets of inventory list because it never was purchased as a generator, okay? It was surplus property that came out of that old tower site, just like all the metal that we took to State Steel and got rid of. It was in that tower site that had no value to us. So it was moved out there, it was set in this old dippy shed, it was up there for, since 2005. And when Mike called me, he had, he called me back a few days later, Mark Allen, he's just, I think, was the contractor that tore the building down, and he said, "The contractor's on site, he'll give you $1,000 for everything and take it away today. You gotta make a decision today." And I said, "Mike, I have to get a second price. This is not county property, this is Starcom property. It's an asset of Starcom, and under this Interstate Compact we have the 28D agreement with the other funded agencies, it dictates any property to be disposed of that is not subject to any federal rules or regulations shall be sold in a manner calculated to return the best price for the property. Property may be gifted to another public safety agency and be used by that agency as a member of Starcom." Glenn and I both agreed this generator had no value, and anybody that would take would spend more on it than a new generator would cost. Starcom's 28D agreement goes on to read, "Funds received for the sale of property will be placed in the Starcom budget and used for the purpose authorized by this agreement." The $1,000 check has been put in the Treasurer's Office, it's documented on the income receipt that it was Starcom's money, it was documented what it was sold for, and it will go back into it. It's credited because we bill the Starcom users for actuals. We don't bill them a quarter or a twelfth of the budget every month. We bill them on actuals and we take any revenue we got and we offset it. So this, I followed the Starcom agreement, I communicated with Glenn Sedby and I, who are running the Starcom program, and that's why we did what we did. It was a big hurry-up deal, we had to get it out there. So, and again, if somebody had just asked me the question, that's all you got to do.
But there is, there is confusion that I agree exists with the inventory list.
My inventory list?
You mentioned the inventory list being an issue, and I think
The inventory list is garbage.
Our, our, our policy in the county is that we would conduct periodic audits, inventory audits. And so I would, if appropriate, I would bring up the fact that we have not had a material inventory audit of emergency management assets since the department has existed, and that we might want to consider tasking the auditor with, with carrying that out.
We have, well, there's two different things here. One is as we go forward, we split these departments into, there'll be an asset inventory for emergency services, and there'll be an asset inventory for Starcom, which is completely done. There'll be an asset inventory for emergency management. Right now, there's a physical assets inventory, and a generally anything over $5,000 goes on that inventory. And everything on that list is accounted for, and if you'd like to come out and touch everything and feel everything, we review that list regularly, and it's all accounted for.
With all due respect, for the last 33 years, that has not been the claim of the county auditor, so you may want to work with them.
That would be, that's the first time that's been communicated to me, so.
Any other discussion? Gary, I want to thank you for your presentation and additional, for all the evidence that you presented here. I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking for myself, I was one of the hired. I have never had a problem in any way, shape, or form. There are some things, when you talk about an inventory, I think Mark undertook an inventory of all the assets when you were chairman of the, in the building. I thought you and Danny did that, but anyway, that is, you know, that can be tightened up. But you have to have a feeling, in my opinion, that there's something wrong. I've never had that feeling.
We have a complete list of our assets. Everything on the asset list we have is accounted for, like I said a few weeks ago.
This is not based on feelings, and I also want to thank you for your service and of course for flight, for the flight assistance.
There's so much more I can add in my career than just like to do what they do.
There, there is, but that is always mentioned, so I mention it again. And I want to thank you. This, in my mind, and I think I speak for everyone else, is not, is not a criticism of you. This is not about you. When this was brought up, as anyone can bring anything up, as you brought all these materials before us, before they were on any agenda whatsoever, this is, this is about following policy, this is about following the rules. None of us are above the rules, and this was not a commentary on you personally. You were never brought up by name from any of the supervisors at that meeting that you referenced. This is about the position and about following 29C, and so I'm glad that you are very enthused about moving ahead to put us in compliance with 29C.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Let's move on, let's go on to item seven. Department of Human, I mean, Social Services Coordinator, Patty Erickson-Plutman here. And this is a discussion and action on amendment 28D agreement, Sioux River Regional Mental Health Disabilities Policy. Dennis?
Basically, I can speak, but we have two people here on that board. Basically, this is eliminating one county, we're on three counties. We did have Sheriff pull out of the Sioux Rivers region, and this is just changing the wording to make it down to three counties.
All right. Well, is there a motion to, they obviously don't want to be with us anymore?
They joined a different region.
They joined a different region? Is there a motion to accept the 28D agreement amendment?
You and the chairman be authorized to sign it.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion?
I might say it's on all the, the county, the respective counties' agendas, and then we will take it back and formally approve it in our region meeting after the approvals from the county. from the county. So, and then it's sent on to the state for-
For their approval?
Yes.
Your bureaucratic message. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item eight, secondary roads.
First item we have today is a contract for bridge inspection for 2015.
Move it. Your second?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item B.
Item B, we have the right-of-way contracts for the 240th and Andrew Avenue Improvement Project. These will require the board's, board chair's signature and needs to be notarized, so I'd like to give it to you.
All right, very good.
After the meeting for-
Get that done.
-the actual signatures.
Move it. Okay, is your second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Was that for just the first one?
That's for the first one.
Okay, that was for-
We have consideration of approval of purchase agreement in these-
With John J. and-
Yeah.
The Accretive Girls. Second one is for improvement of the easement agreement, Jolan Glass Company.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The next one is for the Jim O'Malley Farm, the O'Malley family.
Move it. Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And finally, we have the two for CF Industries and I want to note that CF Industries did donate the easement for that property to assist us in the completion of this project.
Move it.
They're very grateful.
Okay, so you are.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mark, thank you. Dennis?
All these items were covered and the loan we did today.
Okay.
Because we're in a-
That's what I thought. I have nine hearing of any individual group wishing to make a presentation on how to matter on the agenda.
Just want to follow up on Mr. Brown's comments. Feel that I should have that opportunity. The email that was sent out that was in question was merely saying that there was going to be a, a new seat on the Board of Supervisors and also that it was gonna talk about establishing a commission. That since taking office, that commission has not existed. I never found out about the three-person commission until it must have been a few days after this email that I sent out. In no way was I ever questioning Mr. Brown's ability to do his job. In fact, I said that Gary could probably quote the code section, chapter and verse, but in order to be in compliance, we must meet on a regular basis. And I left some suggestions on how we should do that because the E-911 Board meets at climbing hill and the E-911 Director sets those meetings. It isn't the sheriff or the mayor of each town. So, I can see Mr. Brown's a little upset with an email that was merely stating that a commission needs to be put in place. Not questioning ever his ability to do his job, but that in turn shows you sometimes that people have been in a position without any proper oversight. I'm not calling him out on anything other than chapter 29C needs to be in compliance. He can have a wonderful letter by Mark Scout, but I want to know in that letter, Mark Scout thinks that that commission should have met on a regular basis when it never did. He mentioned some, in a piece of paper that he gave me a list of, oh, probably thirteen or fourteen things that he showed up in my office in February thirteenth and went over things. Well, I would assume that, that he would be calling these meetings to order. I put that on the back burner because I can't remember everything, committee that I'm supposed to be on and quite frankly, if it's one meeting, I don't have to go to, that's one meeting, one meeting that I'm kind of glad I missed. But what I called into question is 29C, not Mr. Brown's ability to run emergency management. I called into question and I sent an email to Joshua Woodman from the county's attorney's office. I think that this executive committee that supposedly existed is, doesn't meet 29C and I've asked for his opinion. It should not exist. There's no reason that Dave Amick should be on a committee and not the other mayors from the community, me and whoever's designated this time, it said Mr. Boykett. My, my only question that was, in the two years I've been in office, I don't remember being on a commission, don't remember signing anything, don't remember having any oversight. That's what I'm questioning, the process of how it's been done. Not Mr. Brown and he's upset with Mr. Um, and nobody could be more transparent than the guy who wrote this letter. I sent it to all of you and that's transparency. So Mr. Brown's image of transparency is twisted because transparency is that you put this out and you let people know what's going on and never did I say that he isn't able to do his job. I'm questioning the process. Mr. Um brought it up and that's where it's at today. Give him all the kudos you want, that's fine. He should, he's done a nice job. If he doesn't want to do the job and he doesn't want to live by 29C, then we move forward. Hey?
Sheriff, why are you there? I think the question was on the process and how it was handled.
Exactly right.
Mr. Um being new, brought something up. You both commented on it for the television and there was no forewarning to the rest of the board that this was gonna happen. All that had to be, to avoid all of this, was it should have been put on the agenda with everybody having whatever information was needed. It shouldn't have been done the way it was done.
I want to thank you for your email and say I don't think it's your responsibility that things get on the agenda. You're not the one that sets the agenda.
Well, nobody can't set an agenda unless you have the question.
We all received the question though and part of the reason for me bringing it up was that I knew it wouldn't come up otherwise. And that's, that's my opinion and you can disagree with it.
Why wouldn't you just said, let's put this on the agenda for discussion?
I did and it is on the agenda for discussion today. That's exactly what I did. And I also agree with your suggestion to combine this commission when it is formed with E-911. I think that's a great idea. I, the county got an email from Glenn Setteby that, that they have been nationally accredited for, for, that their 911 center meets all the national requirements and policies, directives and operations and are quote, among the few throughout the nation to achieve this high honor in public safety communications. I think, I think the, the track record of Glenn Setteby calling for the meetings is something that, that other commissions and other departments can learn from and I think that is a good step in the right direction.
And Larry, to go back to yours, is public comment. That's when Mr. Um brought it up, that's when I was asked to come up, that's when we discussed it. I'm not sure if I did anything wrong parliamentary, did I, Pat? I don't think so. Thank you.
Well-
You don't like the process, that's too bad. That's something that a couple of you have never had liked the process. Problem is, what I was after was an oversight.
Sure, let's, I think that's-
I'm not finished talking.
I know, but I think you're doing a little bit too far.
You like an oversight, you want an oversight and that's what you're after.
Well, that's what we want in everything.
That's all that email stated, so follow it.
Okay. Sir, did you have something to say? Okay, except for, give me your name, please.
My name is Jack Taylor. I'm a citizen of Woodbury County, homeowner. And I've been following this process. First of all, I want to thank everyone that I've talked to over the last few weeks here or a couple of weeks on the board here. I appreciate you guys' service. I do appreciate Larry, Gary Brown's service, but I do have some concerns of how his operation is being run. I believe that there are some things that we could take a look at and I'm not questioning his integrity. I think he, he's done a good job. Whether he has been directed wrong or has taken, like he said here a little while ago, taken some of these responsibilities on that he should have never taken on. So now all of a sudden, this blows up, he is overwhelmed. And I don't quite get that. But the thing that I would like to be able to find out is, is from Pat, I tried to get ahold of him yesterday, is, is that have we had an internal audit on this department? Whether it's both departments or, or just a single department inside there? Financial. Yeah, it's our independent county auditor on all the county departments and the- When was the last one that was done? Last year.
Last year.
And they're in the process of completing one right now. Okay. And when will that be made public? Because I can't find any, is there-
It'll probably be in December. We're in the process of completing that.
So for, that's for 2013? 2013, 14, this summer. Okay. So 2011, 12 is available? Yes. At your office? Yes. Okay. All right. Again, I, the thing for me about this is, is that how we got to this point? And I realize, is there anybody even alive that signed I-81, Doc?
I don't know. That doesn't matter. That really doesn't. We should have been aware of this. Absolutely. The sheriff should have been aware of it, the mayor should have been aware of it. Somewhere along the line, the ball got dropped. I don't know what you about that.
Well, it does matter.
I didn't say it didn't matter. I'm saying somewhere along the- Well, it matters, but there's nothing that we can do about, you know, past history.
I'm not-
All we can, all we can do now, sir, is, is move forward in, in correcting and dividing responsibilities here that's what has been suggested by Mr. Brown and, and move forward with it.
There's, there's still gotta be accountability and I know you guys want all the political cover that you want.
There is accountability.
Where's it at? Because I haven't seen it yet.
It's with the audit that we got on an annual basis and it's with every meeting that we have here and going over items on the agenda with discussions like this. I don't know what more that you want.
Well, there is, there's a breakdown in the system.
Well, there's always dysfunctionality in a system, no matter what kind of governmental body there is. That's gonna happen. Nothing is perfect, but all we can do is discuss and try to correct those things as we go along and that's what's going to happen here.
Well, I, where's it, where is the beginning of it? Where do you start from?
We just started today and last week.
Okay. And that is-
And, and that is with-
Because I didn't see that, I didn't see that today.
Well, I saw it today.
I didn't see that in Gary Brown's attitude today.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
I didn't see that. I seen him very upset.
Okay, well, that's, that's your opinion.
Well, I seen him very upset.
All right. Well, sir, let's not go into, we, I want to do something here that is, is positive and can move the county forward in a positive way. I think that's going to happen and, and I am not going to allow any more of the public criticisms of, without substantiation. That's what's happening here.
First of all, there is no-
Well, there is.
Were you not just in this meeting because I-
Yes, I was. Absolutely.
He was upset.
Yes, he was upset. I think there's a lot of people in this room that was upset this morning.
Okay. So where's the public criticism at?
Well, it's, it's been there all morning.
All right, sir. I'm, I don't want to argue with you because that's not why I come here. I am a citizen and I do pay for taxes.
All right. What do you want to accomplish? What is your, what is your purpose?
My, my goal is to hold whoever, whether it's you, whether it's Mr. Um, whether it's anybody, accountable for what has gone on here. I mean, there's a big, there is a, a disconnect of what has happened over the last thirty or forty years or twenty-five or twenty-seven years.
That's your-
Gary Brown was in charge of this.
That's your, that's your opinion.
So what, he's not in charge of it?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I mean, you, you're expressing your opinion and you're welcome to it.
Okay. And I appreciate that.
Okay.
But am I right or wrong, was he not in charge of this?
I am not here to say you right or wrong. I'm not gonna judge that. You can express your opinion and that goes into the record. Period.
All right. Well, my, my ultimate goal is, and I'm not going away, sir, so, I want, I want him and I want whoever else to be held accountable for this commission. And I'm looking at this pretty deep and he has taken on a lot of responsibility over the years, whether it be right or wrong, but he should still be held accountable for where we're at today. He could have called these meetings. He threw out all kinds of paperwork down here. He knew about this mission.
All right, all right. I think that we've heard-
It's unfortunate he's not here to hear your concerns right now.
Well, that's what happens when you get mad and you leave.
Thank you.
I did want to say one thing, Bob Scott, and Larry, I take a little exception to what you said. I don't have a dog in this fight at all, okay? I don't care, Gary Brown's done a good job, Sheriff's done a good job, you've done a good job, but to say that I should have been responsible, you said the mayor should have been responsible.
No, no.
You said the mayor should have called the meetings, you said the mayors should have called the meeting.
Bottom, you took that for all.
No, well, that's what you said. Let me finish. I get a notice for the E-911 Board and let those of you that go, no, I do attend. I'm one of the few assistant mayors that goes to those meetings and, and in the past they have. I take it very seriously. If I'd gotten a notice to attend one of these meetings, I would have made an effort to be there. And I, I sometimes go early so I can send it on the landfill, the garbage deal for Woodbury County, which has no-
You can attend that too, Bob, if you want to.
But I, but you know, what I want to do is what's right and get it done right because I don't want some state auditor coming back and saying, as mayor, you should have known and you didn't perform your job correctly. So I think moving forward, doesn't matter, I don't have what's happened in the past, but you know, when you show me a document assigned 1981, guess what? I wasn't around even the first time in 1981. So after thirty-three years, you might want to review your documents, no matter who you are, and make sure they're still in compliance. That's my point. So I hope we can get the meetings going, hope we can do it right. I'm sorry Gary's feelings got hurt. Also, I said to Gary about this deal is most people on this list aren't in. Most of those mayors aren't around, I knew.
Well, I-
So, so maybe it's just-
I, I would agree with you. I, I think that we move forward at this point, go positive with the thing.
I appreciate that.
And- And I'm sorry you took that comment that way because not the way it was intended. I said it's up to the mayors, it's up to the sheriff, past mayors, prior sheriffs, this county board, I can't lay this all on Gary Brown's-
I'm not laying it on anybody. I'm just saying it's time to move forward and I have other feelings.
Right, I would agree with you.
Just move forward and get it done right.
And I don't think anyone is disagreeing with that.
No, no. I just want to make sure Larry understood this. This is not the mayor's job to do this.
Right. Okay, it's everybody's job.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. Can, can we, if, I, I guess we need some sort of a game plan on establishing this commission. I, I think Gary Brown took responsibility for calling the different mayors and getting things in order, but he mentioned it being an arduous process and, and I'm just not fully confident that, that if we leave it in this court, that this commission will be established. Is there any board action as far as, as far as continuing the discussion next week that we can put on the agenda?
I don't know. It's up to the board. I think that we need to, he said he was going to initiate conversation with the sheriff. I think we should allow that process to happen and then he can bring that as a department head back to the board and discuss it and then make a decision on where we go from here.
Because it sounds like he doesn't want these things to be brought up in the public.
I don't, I-
I didn't think that at all.
No, I didn't think that at all.
I've known Gary, just the amount of time I've been on the board, and I do trust that if he says he will-
Do something he's going to do.
Do something, he is going to do it. He's done that always.
Absolutely.